Always to get people downtown.
So maybe if you wanna reach out to Sally again and Sally Meyer.
What's her name?
Yeah, to me that that parking lot, the city parking lot there or that grass area seems like it'd be the best. That has no trees, has, you know what I mean, it would stand out, it'd be on flat ground, and it'd be close to downtown.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Oh, is there, are there any happy?
You gotta come up.
Um, Crystal or Rachel was having some thoughts Jones. Um, are there any events planned for the time, like to showcase it while it's here?
Sure, yeah. So when it comes, we'll make a big, um, like a big to do.
To do.
Yeah, there's big, yeah.
My, the, the reason I'm asking is because I-
Like an unfailing party.
Like, I, I don't know for sure if it was this one, but something similar was at Simpson College for a while, and I'm an alumni over there, and so it, they had like a huge event, and they had, they called Alumni Home, and because of like the suitcase situation, they said some, they tied that in, like pack your bags and come home for the weekend, spend the weekend with the Gothic, like, just kinda stuff like that, and I think that in that case, it could be a good revenue stream, but it has to be an event, like specifically to showcase it. Yep, and those things are already-
There's quite a bit going on, the bike.
Yeah, we have the bike event coming up and we're talking about this, but yeah, we will do something special to showcase this. It wasn't, I, I think this one was at Simpson, and it did generate a lot of, of, you know, visits and stuff from alumni, so if marketed well, it could do well. That's what I put that in.
Thanks, Crystal.
Thank you.
According to this sheet, looks like there's what, eleven, eleven thousand, six hundred committed?
Committed so far, yeah. So the three thousand dollars-
Another eighty-four hundred required.
The three thousand dollars will know by the end of the month, um, the five hundred will know by next Monday.
Alright, if the city, city signs this contract, in a sense, they're gonna be on the hook for the balance.
Well, we're still, I, we have our fundraisers planned for June, nine, so I don't think we'll have a problem at all. We're gonna keep doing this, we'll make, we'll get the money.
Once you get seventy-five percent of the way there, the community is not gonna not let this happen.
Somehow we'll, we'll get it.
So do I have a motion to put it down there by?
Are we deciding where to put it?
I don't-
We don't, we don't have to decide in some, where.
You just need to decide on ideas.
So there's some ideas.
Um, I mean, we, we'll have to nail that down eventually, but, uh, I would say just keep thinking if you've got other ideas.
And we need to make contact with those people again and-
Yeah. Um, what we do, you know, be honest, the contract, if you're a motion approved that, or if you wanna have it reviewed first, we're gonna, something-
I make a motion, we sign the contract. Every other city's been signing the same one and getting by with it.
First by Cody, second by Betty. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Carried. Seven point six, discussion and possible action on a community catalyst grant.
Um, I guess just a motion to get it, want to, uh-
Move forward.
Put it in our free request, is that what it is?
We'll, we'll start working on the free application and get more information on ideas for possible match. Just 'cause we submitted a free application doesn't hold us to anything.
Right, I make a motion, we do the free application of go through.
Second.
First by Betty, second by Cody. All those in favor, signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Carried. Eight point oh, public safety, eight point one, motion to approve the renewal of beer and liquor license, none. Eight point two, discussion and possible action on sec reading, second reading of ordinance, prescribing civil penalties for failure to license dogs.
As, just wanted to point out, uh, you guys voted last time for an amended version, and so we made that amendment. It's just including that line that says a citation for an enhanced violation of this section shall not be filed prior to final adjudication preceding citation. Or in layman's terms, you have to have one, uh, go through the full process before we cite again.
So moved.
Second.
And that's a roll vote.
We'll start with Kay Smith?
Yes.
MacCard?
Yes.
Rod Smith?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Weimer?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Eight point three, discussion.
I'd like to make a motion to waive the second, but the reading on this one.
First by Betty to waive the third reading.
I'll second it.
Second by Kay. And that would be a roll vote.
Has there been any contact with City Hall regarding the details surrounding the ordinance?
I haven't received any comments.
I've received positive comments that they're glad to see we're doing this. I haven't seen anything negative about it, but I could be wrong.
Any other council members?
It was positive what I heard, that they was in favor of this.
I think there, most people are in favor of it with enforcement.
And so after the third reading, it can be enforced starting tomorrow, correct?
Well-
It's gotta be published.
After it's published.
Yeah, yeah.
And that's a roll vote.
We'll start with MacCard?
Yes.
Rod Smith?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Weimer?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Kay Smith?
Yes.
Thank you, guys.
Eight point three, discussion and possible action on cigarette slash tobacco permit for exhale vape shop.
Some of-
First by Cody.
I'll second it.
Second by Kay.
Is this an actual store in Anamosa? I was two oh eight Westminster Street, is that a storefront?
It's the same location as the Breed Store.
Okay. Got it.
So. Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Carried. Nine point oh, public works, none. Ten point oh, finance. Ten point one, discussion, possible action on change order number one for the water treatment plant expansion project, reducing the total project cost by twenty-four thousand, eighty-nine dollars with Colachi Construction.
So moved.
First by Rich.
Second.
Second by Rod. Any discussion?
It's credit, isn't it?
Yep.
You discuss it.
I, I, I did talk with the engineer just 'cause the one thing, uh, making sure that, I mean, they reviewed the, the concrete footing, uh, it came in right underneath the design strength, and so they, they, it's totally safe, they just basically, um, said it makes sense for us to take the credit and not have them rip it out and replace it, so. Guess it's a good way to start the project, you will not miss it, we'll stay in the credit, but have a good way to start.
Tell them to keep it coming.
All those in favor, signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Carried. Ten point two, discussion and possible action approving pay request number six to Colachi Construction, an amount of fifty-five thousand, four hundred and sixty-six dollars and seventy cents for water treatment plant expansion project.
So moved.
Second.
First by Betty, second by Rich. All those in favor, signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Carried. Ten point three, discussion and possible action of approving pay request number seven to Colachi Construction, the amount of three hundred and sixty thousand, eighty-nine dollars and ninety cents for water treatment plant expre- expansion project.
I'll make the motion to approve it.
First by Rich.
I'll second.
Second by Kay. Discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Carried. Ten point four, discussion, possible action approving the payment of bills for the month of April twenty eighteen.
So moved.
First by Betty.
Second.
Second by Rich.
A few questions regarding the submitted bills or invoices. Sheet one, item number six one four eight one. And, uh, did we contract snow removal? Am I not reading that correctly?
Yeah, um, I guess this is decision of the C and B, but yeah, we contract with, uh, well, Boomerang for, uh, formerly, uh, Reckless-
X-Bin.
To remove the snow in the Main Street area, downtown area, um, it's just takes some, I guess, more detailed oriental equipment, uh, to get the snow removed from that area, and that's been the decision from Greg, Greg in the prior, that, I think that's, uh, five different snowstorms.
Really?
Yeah.
Well, it says times four. I'm just going by that.
There was a council meeting where there was discussion from the public, is they were not pleased with the whole snow removal process. I don't know if this was one of those occurrences or-
It, it seemed like a lot of money to me, but-
Well, this is where they do it, they come in at night and haul it all away.
Yeah.
Right, but-
But the last time it was snow, they didn't haul it all away, there were horrible piles between the parking.
So this is, this is a decision made by the street supervisor to call this company in and haul the piles away. This is not a, this is not them doing it while it's snowing.
I didn't, I understand that somebody authorized.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't know if we can say
But we had-
Street superintendent did.
And also not just said-
If he did, he should be here to answer some questions on that.
Do you remember when Mike Dearborn stood up and said how you can't get over and it's all pushing, it's hard, and you gotta crawl over? When Reckless does it is when the big banks leave, and I'm not saying that they didn't do it four times, but there were not four times out in front of our building that that was done. You know what I'm saying? So if we're paying them to come and do something four times, it's not-
I'm sure they don't just show up without being called.
No, I mean it's-
Yeah, I think it's only the major snowstorm, like, it's not every, every turn.
Yeah, yeah.
It's not every snow.
No, right.
This, this is, this was occurrence during, uh, the month of August, or, excuse me, April.
God, I hope we don't have a snowfall.
Uh, first during March, was it carryover from January? Because the last three snowfalls, it wasn't, wasn't hauled off.
Because that's when it gets shoved out there and it's high. What Mike Dearborn was discussing was when we have big bad heavy snows and it's piled like that. So the idea is that it been that way without being cleaned up.
Well, some, but some of that could be too, that when the city comes down and plows along, they're pushing it to outside to get it to the piles, and so it could be the city cleaning up at least a portion of that before it gets hauled off. But like with these four, is that for the whole winter?
No.
Or, when, when the, what's the timeframe on these four?
If I remember right, I, 'cause I looked at the bill and I asked some questions about it, uh, I think this goes back to like January, so it's probably like the second.
It's like a half a winter?
Yeah.
For the half we got snowing.
Do you know who approved? I mean, I, you weren't here.
I mean, I don't know who decided to do it this way.
When do we, when do we decide to?
I mean, I think, I, I can talk with Greg and come up with some different ideas or questions he could have, but, um, basically, he thinks it would, you know, uh, it makes sense to do it that way, so.
Well, I-
I know we talked about at the one meeting about plowing every, pushing everything to the center and then cleaning up from the center. Granted, that was probably after a couple of these snowfalls, but we may need to look at, relook at this going into next year.
Yeah, I, I would appreciate that there be some type of conversation generated prior to the next snow season between you and Greg, uh, I under, you know, we gotta have, he's gotta have the wiggle room to make those decisions, but when you are faced with a twenty-three thousand dollar bill, if that's not an attention getter to revisit, I don't know what the heck would be.
And I don't know if anybody else can do, I mean, when I was there, it was the quarry. Not, I don't know if they'd be any cheaper, I don't know the difference on the price. But they did it then, nothing wrong with Reckless, but I mean, maybe you should get back to them and see per time or hours, which some way to try and get it comparable.
So the city does not have the equipment to do it?
Not the big one. We used, again, when we were there, they'll make it right now, but we used to clean, if it wasn't a big one, we'd come in at three in the morning and clean Main Street. We'd bring in three trucks and then loader and haul it down and dump it by the football field.
Did you have the size payloaders that they had currently?
Oh, no, not, like I said, the big ones we couldn't, but the smaller ones, we shove it to the corners and nodes. But no, you get a ten, twelve incher, no, you're gonna have to hire somebody then.
Well, and that I understand, but how many of them did we have this year?
Yes, that's-
That's the thing, there wasn't many big ones.
Why?
Some of the nasty snowfalls we had occurred in the last sixty days.
Yeah, yeah, the worst, yeah. So, I mean, might be something, somebody else maybe, I don't know what big company, or you know, who, but just get some bids or cost estimates or something, just to compare it.
I have another question, six one four eight two, directly below it. Uh, as I read it, it's a repaired a water line, Brekki Mechanical. Jim, was that twenty-seven hundred dollar wa- uh, water line repair with Brekki?
That was weird, that's in wastewater.
Wastewater? Alright, I would've thought there'd been another W there. Do we know anything about that one?
I don't know.
Yeah.
I can give you some information about it.
I read it as water line, not wastewater, so that's why I was-
Well, I think it's a water line in the four, seven, one, seven, is that the code for wastewater?
The fifties, yeah. It's, it's kinda our wastewater-
Or sorry. Yeah.
Department.
The water line.
It's in wastewater, though. It's wastewater budget.
Six one five one zero. J and R Supply.
Six one five one zero?
Six one five one zero. Concrete equipment. Um, focusing on the, uh, the first one, two thousand dollars, what type of concrete equipment do we purchase?
I think that's a, a concrete saw, I think.
That's the first concrete saw the City of Anamosa has purchased?
Uh, I think the, the, I think the street department had one.
Does this replace in that one?
No.
So now we have two.
That's my understanding.
Do we use a concrete saw daily, weekly?
I, I couldn't say how often the wastewater department would use it.
That's for the wastewater?
That's for wastewater.
Care, do they share stuff? Does our city share?
They do share some things, uh, and obviously it makes sense, I mean, there's some things that makes sense to share, there's some things that don't.
Right.
I, at, at this point, I wasn't sure operationally enough to say.
Name your name.
Yeah, it's like, I, I trusted Dan's judgment on that, um.
So beyond cutting concrete with a gas chop saw, in my line of work, I use it to cut all kinds of stuff. Steel, rebar, plastic pipe, asphalt, everything like that, so, um, concrete equipment, yeah, it, it is a concrete saw, but it also, it, it has a lot of purposes.
Lot of different blades you can put on it.
Yeah, yeah, I use it to cut holes in commercial building roofs, I mean-
I doubt that we're doing that.
I'm just saying that, even though it says concrete equipment, there's multiple uses for it.
I can understand that.
Not, but they're just doing a, some one concrete project to buy a saw, you know.
And I don't know if that's just a saw or if that's blades, 'cause blades aren't cheap, I mean.
Yeah, no.
I'm, I'm not making excuses.
Two hundred bucks will get you a blade.
Yeah.
A blade, you know, one, so.
So if you get a concrete and one for steel and-
Yeah.
I don't think we need to go out and start purchasing equipment for every employee within the City of Anamosa though either. If you can share, share. If you can't, learn how to. Second sheet, six one five two six. Uh, three items at Menards. I'm looking Culvert Hydrant, not sure what that would be at Menards, the boards to repair the barricades, that could not be purchased at Banowits.
Wouldn't that would be in my department?
The Culvert, it's in your department.
I have, the Culvert was cheaper than I can find anywhere else.
Okay.
Um, and then that's why I purchased, I purchased it there, um, prior to that, I checked with, uh, Brown Supply, and they were actually two thousand dollars more than what that statement is, and this is for the project that in well by.
The boards for the barricades on sheet one, six one four seven nine, appears to be similar, and we purchased that locally. So, I'd like to put the emphasis on purchasing material and services locally when it is available at a compatible, comparable cost. Sheet three, six one five four four. Is that a double entry?
Oh, it looks like it.
Yeah.
No, I, I think that's dividing the total cost between the water and wastewater.
Okay.
That's why it's the same amount, they split it half and half.
It's a software to read meters.
Same page, bottom, six one five five five, uh, water solutions, a phosphate repair kit. Did something break that we have to repair, that we had to repair it?
Now, it was a pump that went down. We had a pump, polyphosphate pump, that had been repaired, and I brought him in, the only place I could get a repair kit was through him.
Okay.
Brought it in through there, that direction. We were down for a day on that, and then it wasn't pumping the next day, and we had a problem with the foot valve on it too, so he put in a lot of time on it when he came out on his own.
Thanks for your explanation, Jim. That's all I have according in regard to the bills.
All those in favor, signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Carried. Ten point five, discussion and possible action on resolution setting the date for the public hearing amending the current city budget for fiscal year twenty seventeen eighteen. And it's a roll vote.
I know we set the public hearing for May twenty-ninth, two thousand and eighteen, six P M.
Second.
First by Cody, second by Rich. And it, it's a roll vote.
We will start this with Rod Smith?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Weimer?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Kay Smith?
Yes.
MacCard?
Yes.
Eleven point oh, city administrators report.
Not too much, uh, just an update, or, no, reiterate that, uh, our next round of interviews for the Chief of Police Search will be on Saturday. Um, the, I met with, um, Lisa Beams at the, uh, school district to discuss the sidewalk, and we're, we're together well to come up with, I mean, we're, we're gonna resolve the issue, they're gonna get it, um, redone, and we're gonna work through, uh, the issue, um, with possible damage from our contractor, so we'll, we'll get it taken care of, and she was more, you know, kind of happy to work with her, so. Uh, cemetery rules we discussed last time, and I just fixed one report that we didn't have a ordinance prepared for this time, it's still on my list of things to get done, hopefully we'll have at least a draft for next week.
Thanks for not forgetting that.
I'd like to see the emphasis on the next meeting, so we can get that cemetery ordinance locked down. You're gonna start seeing activity up there, if we already have it.
And, uh, I guess just on that note, um, even if we don't have an ordinance in place, I guess, just the one thing, there's a Miami approach for, 'cause we do have activity coming up, um, any cleanup activity, uh, that we do, I guess my approach would be that, um, as long as it's not off of the base, and it's not impeding or mowing or trimming or then we'll probably just leave it, if that's okay. So I mean, even if it's not in place, that will kind of be our policy for the upcoming cleanup. Uh, anything on the base or stone will be, you know, for the maintenance of the family.
Sounds good.
And I have a question, were you able to meet with the school about the day of service or the day of caring or?
No, we haven't.
The group of kids that are gonna be out?
Yeah, um, I guess, I, I haven't got a chance to meet with them, but basically comes down to having the right sort of activities for them to do, I guess, uh, we can come up with something.
If I had to send you a paper, yeah.
Said it.
That's all I've got.
Alright. Twelve point oh, mayor and council reports on boards and commissions.
I went to the library board meeting, I want to call everyone's attention to Loretta's retirement on April twenty-seventh from three to five. Y'all have to go, 'cause I'm gonna be gone. Upcoming things, April twenty-fourth, a trivia night, and those are fun. May one is the World War Two. Homefront author Michael Eckers is presenting, and, and those have been enjoyable, I would- Homefront author Michael Eckers is presenting, and, and those have been enjoyable, I would say. The Great Giving Day is May tenth, so if y'all have any extra money you'd like to donate to the library, they'd love to receive it.
Um, just to touch on the Better Together block party. I know that Rod, you said you'd do food, if there's anything you've got to need or whatever, like make sure you put the rest of us to work. Do you, did you find some music?
Not yet.
Travis and I walked it, we had a Better Together meeting, and we walked it, and so he has a good idea of how. We can put, start not at the end of the block, so that we're like on this side of hot shots. So that we're not interfering with her business, but yet there'll still be plenty of room, so. Yeah, and I think the city department heads are all working on some great stuff. I just know if you guys need help with anything.
Thirteen point O, public with business with the council on items not on the agenda.
Questions? Um, Crystal, we're ready, two oh seven, South Jones Street, uh, just wanna do a little follow-up, uh, cause people are still asking me, so this comes from other people. Uh, was there ever a, uh, finding on the last review for form review? Did anybody ever find that? I'm asking for other people.
A finding in terms of?
When his last review was, that was kind of a hot topic before he was.
I guess for me, it's irrelevant at this point.
I know, I'm just saying people are asking, so if anybody has the information, can it be offered?
No, it cannot be offered.
Okay, um. And I also just can, I know you guys have some decisions to make, and I was kinda wondering, is there a timeline, I know you touched on, on your smart interviews on Saturday. Um, you have some really, really great candidates, um, I happen to know who a few of them are, because they have outed themselves. So, um, I just encourage you guys to really think about, you know, what's been displayed for leadership by the individuals. Um, I know that one of them has kinda gone through the rankings and resources to actually contact an officer, ask a few questions. Um, I feel like that's kind of the leadership that we need in this town, another one, if you Google his name. Um, you're gonna find some really good stuff, some town halls that he's done, and some leadership things that he's done, and I feel like. That would be a good thing for you guys to do, Google all of them, and you will know exactly what I'm talking about, and we will keep it under wraps, and what can say is thing. Um, also, there is a policy, um, I just wanna touch on Tanyi real quick. I don't wanna shame her or anything, but there is a policy in the handbook that says that, um, city employees need to conduct themselves. In a. Good way, um, in their personal lives as well as professional lives, and I feel like there needs to be some sort of. I don't know, a statement, a public apology, something, I feel like if you sweep it under the rug, you're kind of losing that transparency that. Um, people are asking for, so I would encourage you to, I don't know if you need to get a written apology for the newspaper, I, I don't know. But I feel like the community is kind of looking for some sort of leadership from you guys, or some sort of suggestion. I know you can't punish her based on my law and so on, but just a little encouragement on that as far as leadership. Um, and then do you know, so you're interviewing five more or five candidates. Um, what is the timeline for when you think you'll make a decision? I know it's kinda asking a lot for a date, but. What is your timeline for an offer, is made?
We won't know till Saturday.
Yeah.
Yeah. It all depends on all the candidates and that, on when they could possi-
Sorry.
Possibly move or whatever.
I mean, in terms of decision, best, best case scenario, we know that night and make a decision, uh, but. We could say we need to do another round of interviews, and it could be two or three more weeks.
Okay, so you don't have like an end date in mind, like by June first or whatever, do you hope to have extended an offer?
I think. Our target date was like early June, perhaps my starting, but, but, uh. That's based on the fact that we make, uh, make an offer shortly after Saturday, so.
What does it look like, I know that they have to like move to Anamosa, right, is that still gonna be a requirement that the police chief reside within city limits?
We just are, we're not laughing at you, it's just that we, we don't, we're not discussing. What all of the details are publicly, because a lot of them have asked us not to. And so as far as, if we're gonna do variances on anything, we can't say. We can't say a definitive, they have to be in city limits, where what if they wanted to live on the other side of Wopsey Bridge? Would you let the best candidate go because he wouldn't live right inside the town? Like, there's so many variables, it's really hard to say.
Residency reform is still, uh, discussion court.
It's just hard to say how it's exactly gonna go, does that help?
It, it does, so if, if they don't, I, I mean, I, I understand, if they wanna live in the country, they wanna live in the country, I mean, that's just how it works, but. I mean, is it like a, a five mile radius, I mean, is there gonna be, cause I, I feel like that's fair. Five mile radius, quick response time if necessary, if there's an emergency, but you can still have some leniency of where maybe they wanna buy a house, buy, build a house.
It's up for discussion, yeah.
Okay, so we don't have a timeline, the contract is.
We, we do have a timeline. We, best case scenario. That we make a decision on Saturday, we extend the offer, it's accepted, and that, that individual only needs to give two weeks. There's your best case scenario. Otherwise, we're still going back, that we plan to have someone in place the first week of June.
Unless we do another set of areas.
This whole thing could fall apart, so you don't even predict for that.
We're not trying to be.
Possibility.
We're not trying to be a base of crystal, we're just trying to be that, it's, uh, it's.
There, there's several moving parts in this thing that, it's hard to sit and say definitively. Boom, this is gonna happen on this day, this is happening on this day. Depending on how it goes, we could, like John said, we could be done on Saturday, extend the offer, June first, somebody's here. Round of interviews go, and we get down to say two candidates that everybody loves.
And they both say no.
Well, or, or.
That's not gonna happen.
Or they put, they both come back for another round of interviews. It just extends it out, so it's a fluid timeline.
And contract negotiation, the very, if we have a rock star in here and he's like. I'm willing to give you this, but this is really what I want from the city, we're gonna have to take into, you know what I'm saying, so. You're right, a lot of moving parts, there's no. Yeah.
Well, I'm, I'm sorry.
They may have a contract that, that they have to fulfill as well.
Well, right, but I would think that that would be in their consideration while applying for another position that they would have to.
They might have to give.
Their responsibility, that's not yours.
And they might have to give a ninety day notice.
If they have a contract and we want them, and their contract is we have to give a ninety day notice, we have to, you know what I mean, it will affect us.
Well, you don't have to give, they would have to give.
Right, but it would, it would affect when they would start.
Okay, I just want you guys to understand, I'm not here just for me, I'm curious, but I've had a lot of people ask questions, so I'm trying to answer their questions.
Everybody else that wanted to ask the question.
To answer your other question, the way it stands today. Everything is negotiable, it needs to be reviewed and just a final decision, but the way it stands today. The individual is required to live within the city limits. That's the way it stands today.
And that was why I asked, like, was there a timeline for, you know, cause I mean, is it six months, is it three months, like, a reasonable amount of time, I would assume to move your.
The five, or excuse me, the six. It's, gives you a year to move.
The six individuals on this council wanna police chief in place sooner than any of the residents that you're representing.
Amen.
Yes.
That's good, I'm really not here to pick any fights, I'm just asking questions, people are asking me, cause I don't wanna misrepresent anything, so.
Well, then if they had questions, they could hear it up front too.
Yeah, they're, they're welcome.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Crystal.
Thirteen point O, attorney.
Second.
All those in favor.
Just pick a name, Penny.
They, they won't?
They won't, why?
My company's gonna think I moved and didn't leave a forwarding address.